Please stand to the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so before we start our meeting, we need to report out that we had a closed session meeting. And would you like to report out on what occurred at our meeting, Madam City Attorney?
So we met on three items. One was the city manager performance evaluation. The other was the existing litigation between Hacienda Realty and the City of Montesereno and the Hatam Tabrizi versus City of Montesereno case as well. And we have nothing to report on those items.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Ann Standing?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Willsheimer?
Here.
Mayor Craig?
Here. Okay, are there any changes to the orders of the day?
There are no changes.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we're at oral communications where any person in the audience can speak on any topic that is not on the agenda tonight. I do not have any blue cards for this, but if you would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand and we'll call you forward. And seeing none, we're going to move on to written communications. Do we have any written communications tonight?
There are none tonight.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent calendar, items one through five. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Actually, I need to request that we pull item five. I just have a bit of additional information and a request of the council regarding the motion.
Okay, very good. Can I have a motion to pull item number five? So moved.
Second.
Okay, at this point, we will get our electronic voting system in here. I still can't join Andrea, so you'll have to record me manually.
So let me just... That was by...the motion was by Councilmember Ann Standing?
Yes.
Okay, that was seconded by Councilmember Rogers. Okay. So can you vote now? Do you have voting? To pull the item?
Item.
Okay. I have all votes in except for Mayor Craig?
I vote yes.
Vote yes, okay. The pass was 5-0.
All right, thank you very much. So now can I have a motion to approve consent calendar items one through four? So moved.
Second.
And so we have a motion?
I have three votes in.
Okay.
Okay, I have four votes in. Mayor Craig?
Yes. Okay. So now we're going to go to item five on the consent calendar.
So this is in regards to the potential formation of the Santa Clara-Santa Cruz County's Airport Community Roundtable. There was a slight error in the report, and I do apologize. It's regarding the potential contribution that the city would have to make. One, and if...there's a table on page forty or forty-six. It's not really necessary to turn to it, but it was in the materials that went to the city's association regarding this. And unfortunately, I had misread the column that was the correct column. So what I had put in there is that the potential amount at fifty cents per resident would come out to, according to their calculation using their population number, nineteen hundred and fifty dollars a year. And that's what I put in the report. That was my mistake. The table on page forty, I misread, and actually, it should have been the next column, which was around seven hundred dollars. But over the last number of days, I've had an opportunity to talk with some of the other city managers, and there is the potential that some of the cities may not join. Now, what that means is, the fewer cities that join, potentially, the ones that remain in would have to pay more. So what I recommend is, which is what a couple of other cities did, is their councils said, "Okay, well, we're still interested in joining, but we're going to put a cap on how much we would contribute." So what I...I just talked to the executive director, Andy Jordan, today, and she's indicated there's...I can't say publicly because it's not for sure yet, but there are possibly three cities that won't join. So she ran the numbers again to taking those three cities out, and it would put our contribution closer to nine hundred dollars. So my suggestion would be, if the council so chooses to move forward with the, you know, formation of this, that as part of your motion, I would suggest putting a cap of, say, a thousand dollars per year. And then that way, if more cities go out, you know, then you've indicated to me as your city manager what your limits are. So that would be my suggestion, just to add to a motion if you so choose to go forward with this, that you would cap it at a thousand dollars for the yearly contribution.
Can I ask a question?
Okay, yes. So are there any questions for staff?
Yes, and what is the benefit for Montesereno to join this roundtable?
Well, it is...would provide a forum, you know, for each of the communities to have a voice in having input to the two airports, SFO as well as SJC, the FAA, in, you know, in matters related to airport noise, you know, aircraft noise, basically. I did confirm, I was a little surprised, but it actually gives...if there would be one councilperson that would be appointed to the roundtable, we would have the same vote as any other city or jurisdiction, which was kind of shocking, because if San Jose were to join, of course, they would only have one vote as well. So, you know, in our case, you know, it would provide a forum for one of the council to be a part of this larger, you know, discussion with some potential, you know, input on possible solutions. And in this case, you know, we'd have a really huge voice, given the size of our city. Now, there are some cities that, you know, I've spoken to their city managers, and they have specifically said they're telling their councils no, because they feel that their cities are not affected by the airport noise. So I think it would be kind of a matter of, if the council feels, you know, we are affected somewhat, and even maybe if we aren't so much, you know, would you like to have a voice at the table? So I think those are kind of the two important pieces related to this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, I definitely could be wrong in this, but I could have sworn it was sixteen hundred dollars and it was fifty cents per citizen.
Well, if the table...that's what I got incorrect. When you go to page forty or forty-six of the city's association roundtable packet, I misread. It was actually nineteen fifty was in one column. But when I double-checked with Andy to make sure I had the right amount, she goes, "No, Terry, it's the last column under targeted budget."
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
I did too. So they're only looking to have a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand, and with that, the table breaks out the cost based on our population at fifty cents per resident. And even...and I still argue with them that their population estimate is a little high, so they would need to adjust it down. So it's likely it would...even if a few cities don't join, and her estimate is eight hundred and ninety, you know, I think our population's less than she says, so it would be even less. But like I say, I would suggest if there's enough support for it, that part of the motion would include a cap, so we don't end up, you know, being on the hook for a lot more than we thought we might be.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, I would like to open this up for public hearing, and just for the benefit of the audience, to let you...give you a little background about what's going on here. The city's association, which is a group of all of the cities in Santa Clara County, have been working with the counties of Santa Cruz and also San Mateo Counties to come up with these different roundtables that our U.S. congressional representatives have asked us to put together, because, as you may have noticed a few years ago, the FAA brought in what they call their next-gen flight approach system. And you might notice a number of airplanes are going directly over Montesereno now instead of circling around them. Well, Saratoga, Los Altos Hills, Los Altos, Palo Alto have been affected even more. And these representatives have gone from a couple of complaints every month to literally dump trucks full of complaints coming in. Within the...as soon as the next-gen paths were implemented, the FAA went from two complaints a month to twelve hundred a month. So this has been a very unpopular change in the flight paths around our area, and our representatives are taking the steps to try to figure out what can be done about this. We don't know if anything can be done, but there have been successful movements like this in other cities, so we're going to give it our all to make something happen here and hopefully bring quiet skies above our areas again. So at that, if there was any comments anybody wanted to make, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring this back to council, and I will ask...
I did want to ask one more...add one more thing, which I forgot about. There is the possibility that enough councils will not, you know, want to move forward. There is a certain threshold that has to...I think it's fifty percent of the communities. So if...even if Montesereno City Council says yes, there is tell some possibility that there might not be enough support. I mean, so far, it doesn't seem to be the case.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this point, I will look for a motion for item five. Okay, my screen says I still need a second.
Yes, you do.
Would anybody like to second it?
I'll second it.
Well, you can push the button. Now I'm working.
There it is.
Okay. So we should now get a voting screen appearing.
And this would be, including in the motion, a cap of a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have all votes in.
Okay, please record the vote.
The pass is 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to our public hearing section, item number six, our 2018-2019 weed abatement program. And should we start off with a staff report on this?
Actually, this is just your annual weed abatement program. There is a list attached to your staff report. The county in April, I believe in April, sends out notices to those property owners that need to abate weeds. They have a certain deadline to complete that by. If they don't complete it by then, the county comes in and contracts to have that work done, and then the work is placed on the tax assessment. And there is somebody here to represent that program, and he can correct me or add to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open it...yes, Councilmember Brand standing.
Just one question. Is there any repeaters on here? This gets...it's always surprising that anybody's even on here, especially with the fires and everything going on. I'm just wondering if there's any repeaters from last year.
So the majority of the list are people who have been on it for more than one year, generally speaking, because they've been added in a year, then approved in the commencement hearing the following year, and then next year, they're being charged the ninety-dollar inspection fee. There are two people on your list which actually have assessments beyond the ninety-dollar annual inspection fee. One is someone who failed inspection this year and has had work ordered, although that work we do not yet have a bill for, so we do not know that it has been done. The other gentleman, the larger assessment, is for work that was performed after the assessment hearing last year, and that has been added into the bill this year, as well as the ninety-dollar inspection fee and the administrative fee after a failed inspection for this year.
And these were people that had their own contractors do the service, correct?
The people who failed inspections may or may not have had contractors perform service. It is frequently the case that people may meet the deadline, but may miss when we are actually in the area inspecting, because they don't maintain the property, and it does need to be maintained from the deadline until the end of October.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for our guests? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, I'll open up this item for public hearing. I don't have any blue cards on this. Would anybody like to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council, and if there is no discussion, we will be looking for a motion.
Do you want me to make the motion?
I would love for you to make a motion.
We already...I think we already have a motion, don't we?
It's not on my...the button hasn't even lit up on mine yet.
Again. Okay. Let's have a second.
Okay, who would like to second it?
Oh, you want me to make the motion?
Somebody already made it.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
We are now voting.
Okay, all the votes are in?
Please record the vote.
There you go, and it passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. That takes us to new business, item number seven, the referendum challenging the general plan designation at 17765 Daves Avenue, the Baptist Church. And can we start off with a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you know, June fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, a referendum petition was filed with the city challenging the general plan amendment for the property located at 17765 Daves Avenue, also known as the First Baptist Community Church property. In June of two thousand and seventeen, the city council voted to place the referendum on the ballot for the November two thousand and eighteen election. In February of two thousand and eighteen, the city entered into a processing and settlement agreement with Russell Stanley and Hacienda Realty regarding the potential development of the Hacienda site. In the event that the Hacienda site was approved by the city council, that development could be used as an alternative site in the city's housing element, so that the First Baptist Community Church property would no longer be needed, and the referendum could potentially be removed from the ballot. In June of this year, the city council did approve that project, which would allow thirty-five, thirty-six housing units, fifteen of which are multifamily, which is consistent with our housing element program 2.5. Under that housing element program, we provided that the church would be rezoned by December of two thousand and sixteen, and if it was not, that an alternative site would be found, would be designated. So the Hacienda site, as approved, could be designated as our alternative site. However, on this July twelfth, I believe, a challenge to that project was filed in the Santa Clara County Superior Court, calling into question whether or not that site could be developed as proposed and approved by the city. The challenge is based on the California Environmental Quality Act. Pursuant to that, the city and the parties to the lawsuit, which include a neighboring property owner as the petitioner, and Hacienda Realty and Russell Stanley as the real party in interest, those parties are required to have a mandatory settlement meeting, which did occur today. I will say that settlement discussions are ongoing. At this point, there has been no settlement reached. But in the event that the case is resolved, then that site could be used as your alternative site under the housing element. And so before you tonight is the question of whether or not you want to proceed with the referendum on the ballot in November of two thousand and eighteen, or if you want to remove that item from the ballot. In order to do so, you would need to pass a resolution rescinding the general plan amendment on the Baptist Church site, and pass a resolution canceling the election for the referendum. So we're here tonight just for direction. If you are interested in considering the referendum being removed from the ballot, we would recommend that you provide that direction to staff, and we can bring that forward at a special council meeting that would need to occur no later than August fourteenth, because we do need to notify the registrar of voters to remove it from the ballot by August fifteenth. And so I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to open this up for the public to weigh in. I have a couple of blue cards. The first one is Sean Luthold.
Are the blue cards still available?
Yes, they're over on the right-hand side. My right.
You got it. Go straight. Right there.
Hello, Sean.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you to council and staff for taking this issue up at this time, here on the eve of the time to make a decision on this. First, I understand that you all may well have been getting advice on this issue from city staff, and that's wonderful. The Montesereno Citizens for Sensible Development have weighed in and offered that we are certainly amenable to taking the referendum off the ballot, and would like that to be the result. There's some important reasons for that, and that is, if we model what goes on here and look at the possible scenarios for our city, there are, I see, four possible scenarios, and we need to consider what happens under those scenarios going forward. First is that the church matter goes on the ballot and is defeated by the citizens in November. If that happens, we hand Russell Stanley a large bargaining chip with the city as he finishes settling with his neighbor, which will certainly happen at some point here in some form. But as we were warned, it is possible for Mr. Stanley to come back at some point in this process and ask for more. So if we have this referendum and the zoning doesn't pass, this could be very problematic for the city in its negotiations with Mr. Stanley. If we look at it going on the ballot, and it is approved by the voters, then we've just zoned twice as much in this cycle compared to what we needed, because Russell Stanley's case is going to go forward and going to be completed, and that's going to happen. That development is going to move forward in this cycle. He has those lawsuits, which will come back at us if this doesn't remain settled. So the settlement you all entered into with him that allowed for the thirty-six units is going to go forward. The third possibility is we go off the ballot and the Stanley case gets sorted out. That's great. Everything works right, and you all did the right thing for the community. Lastly, if we go off the ballot and Russell Stanley's thing falls apart completely, what happens is you all can come back and consider rezoning the church a year after you've taken it off the ballot, because the council did not agree that this would never come back again. It can come back up on the church ballot. So we're here tonight to consider those possibilities and make the very best decision for the city. But what we've got to avoid is, we don't want to zone the church and go forward with the Hacienda project in the twenty...pre-two thousand and twenty-three cycle. We'd end up with our thirty units zoned. We'd get a pat on the back from HCD. We end up with by right development in the church coming back at us someday down the road. So this is the time to take that off the table. If you all need the church at some point, let's put it back later. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Harvey Shand?
Yeah, I was just going to add my perspective, being one of the people that went around and carried the petition around and got various input. It was almost, without exception, a feeling of everybody I got signed the desire to not do the job, do the project at the church. And I can only guess that if we leave it on the ballot and go back to the people in the town and explain, "Yeah, we've got this in the ballot, but we also already have this thing with the Hacienda, and that's going to solve our problem," probably without exception, people say, "Why are we doing both of these things? This doesn't make any sense to me. I'm glad we're doing the Hacienda thing. Let's put all of our effort behind that and remove the church thing." And as we just mentioned, that can always be added back in. There's no reason why you can't put the church back in the program two, three, four years from now, if it's needed. But otherwise, let's just focus all of our efforts on the Hacienda project. And I think that that's what happened if we put this on the ballot, because we'll undoubtedly put together a campaign to talk to people and get their input, which we will feed back to you. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Roger McCarty?
Good evening. Seems like we are meeting on a regular basis on this same topic, and it just seems silly. This has been going on for ten years. I have three quick things to tell you. Number one, I've stood here, I mean, I've sat here, meeting after meeting, and I've heard people say this, "I don't want it in my backyard." I just need you to remember, it is in our backyard, literally in our backyard. It's not in your backyard. It's not in anybody's backyard, except ours. And the city council, two years ago, forced that upon us as the church. We've been in that location, the church has been in that location since nineteen fifty-seven or thereabouts. We took the property in nineteen seventy-three. I just need you to ask yourself, what would you do if the city council came to you as a property owner and said to you, "Oh, by the way, your backyard is going to be now the new location for twenty-one units"? I don't think you'd sit too well with that, and we haven't either. I just beg of you, get us off of here, and frankly, I don't like what I just heard. Ah, take it off, and if we need it, we'll come back to it. See, that's what I don't like hearing, because not one of you as a council member can tell me what's going to happen in ten years. I asked a couple of years ago about eminent domain, and you went on record, the council at the time, went on record. That's fine. But you see, you're not going to be here in ten years as a council member. And what I'm hearing is, oh, we'll just bring it back. I don't ever want it to be on the agenda. Our church doesn't ever plan to build anything. If you would just spend some time and come to my property and drive onto our church property, there's one entrance, one! Why would I want twenty-one houses on my backyard? We wouldn't. And you forcing it on us is just ludicrous. I beg of you, get it off the agenda, and get us off, and don't ever think about bringing it up again. Because I'll tell you, you bring it up in another six months or a year, I'll be back again, doesn't matter, because the council didn't care two years ago. That resolution that I read tonight, I picked up the paperwork, I don't remember ever reading it before, I thought, yeah, without any input from us, well, negative input, without any affirmation from us, the city council just said, "You know what? We're going to give you a PRM, remove your R1, and whether you like it or not, it's yours." I know that some of you have voted every time for the church. I would beg of you, come and sit with me, come to my property, I keep saying "my," our property, and look at it and ask yourself, how could we force these people to put twenty-one units on the back of their property? It won't work, and we will never do it as a church. So I don't see any reason why the city council would ever designate a piece of property that would be never used for that purpose. Please, vote it down.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is the last blue card, so if anybody else would like to speak, please come up and fill in a blue card. Ed Turner?
Thank you. Just a quick comment, and you've heard this before. Rescinding the church zoning is the right thing to do. I hope you guys will do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. And would anybody like to start? I'll start on my left. Councilmember Rogers?
I pass.
Okay, Councilmember Ann Standing?
Thanks. The...just a few comments, and, you know, many of which I previously said, but the... said, but the, you know, when we had an opportunity, and I've listened to the reverend speak about this, obviously, for the last many years, because I've been sitting here for about 10 over this particular issue, and every potential site we ever identified, everybody who was at that site said, no, we don't want it. That was the position. We then forged a compromise and allowed the Hacienda property to be built out beyond four units, which is what they would have otherwise had to do, to build four homes on that site. We enlarged that to allow them to build anywhere from 12 to 16. That was a compromise. That would have been sufficient to satisfy the state of California, HCD. It would have satisfied the, it satisfied the council that voted on it, and it didn't satisfy the property owner, who then filed three lawsuits against us, and the third one is still pending, along with hundreds of public record requests, maybe not hundreds, maybe it's dozens and dozens, but producing over thousands of pages of documents, many of which he never picked up. All I was asking us to do was to chase around and do things. And then we came up with this brilliant solution, which I opposed a couple of weeks ago, which was to grant them 36 units, 36. And if you were at the hearing that we had to approve that project that evening, we heard Mr. and Mrs. Hatam Sabrizi come here and talk about what they needed to be done in terms of that particular project that would have permitted them to say, you know what, we support this, even though it's more than what we wanted. And there was no compromise there whatsoever, no compromise at all. In fact, Mr. Stanley stood here and said no, or maybe he sat in the audience and shook his head, no, I can't remember, it was one way or the other. And instead, you know, and he's, of course, a resident of this community. He's our neighbor. He's a neighbor for all of us. And we've allowed him to bully us into this position of approving a project which is far more dense than before. I guess the bottom line on this issue about the referendum, I mean, the council that was seated at the time voted unanimously to zone the property on the church, and residents have obviously, certain residents have stood up, about 500 or some, have said, we want to vote on this and reverse what the city council did. And the way this is currently situated right now is that that is an issue that should go forward and go forward to an election. And I'm not interested whatsoever in postponing any decision about that. I think, let the issue go forward, let it be on the ballot, and whether or not Mr. Stanley finds time and the opportunity to satisfy a settlement with the Tabrizis or not, is going to be something we'll just have to see. And if that happens, then we'll have to deal with that issue as it occurs. But frankly, you know, we've never gotten any place with the resolution of the Hacienda property without having some litigation filed. And frankly, had they not filed this lawsuit, we wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be sitting here in this position. We would have otherwise been going forward with the election. So I, for one, think the election should go forward, and I've heard the reverend in his very impassioned speech, and it's, it was a compromise that was struck two years ago, again, voted unanimously by the council, and I can't see any reason not to let the citizens vote on it and let them decide that we either made a wise or an unwise decision.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wolshimer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two years ago in May 2016, the council voted five to nothing to rezone the church for multifamily housing. I remember that very well, because I was one of the five people I voted for, for this, two years ago. The reason I did was because there was no other alternative. There were no viable other options for us, for the council. That's why I voted in favor. However, things have changed since then. The Hacienda plan was developed and was approved by the city council. There is a lawsuit now against that. I'm personally, I'm fairly confident that that will be settled, and the project will go forward, maybe with some delays, with some changes, but I think it'll go forward. So even though I voted for rezoning the church in 2016, I'm in favor of bringing this back to the council next week to, for a vote. We're not going to vote about this tonight. If we decide to bring it back for a vote, it'll be voted on next week. So for those of you who expect a vote tonight, that's not going to happen. The other reason, however, minor in the grand scheme, is that by taking it off the ballot, we will save the taxpayers $31,000, which is, in the grand scheme of things, maybe not a lot of money, but it's $31,000. So I'll end with a question. It's kind of a rhetorical question, actually, not expecting any answer from anybody, but assuming that the Hacienda project will go forward, what possible purpose does rezoning the church serve? I can't see any purpose of keeping the zoning the way it is, if the Hacienda project goes forward, really. And again, I'm not expecting an answer from anybody, but I personally don't see any purpose of keeping things the way they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Turner?
No comments.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of comments also. I was also on the council that voted to approve the zoning. I thought that staff came up with a number of viable properties that they presented to us, and the only viable one, through the process of elimination, really came down to the church. And we voted because we needed to support the state in its efforts and to be compliant so that we could file and have approved a general plan, because all cities are required to have some. There are some cities that skirt them, and some of our neighbors have skirted them, but we have always tried to be a very responsible city. For example, we've pretty much wiped out all of our purse debt, so we're one of the few cities in California that can pat ourselves on the back and say that we don't have any unfunded liabilities. We've always tried to be above board and do things as best as we could. And we thought we had a pretty unique solution. We found a piece of property that we were able to vote, we were able to just place a check mark in a box, and we also had the benefit of increasing the property value of the church, should the pastor ever want it. I mean, but he told us he didn't want it, and that's all he had to say. I don't want to do it, and we were done. But this kind of blew up. Everybody got up in arms, and they came for it with the referendum, which is kind of a shame, because that gave Mr. Stanley all of the ammunition he needed to bring forth a lawsuit against the city and to continue placing pressure on HCD, which is the Housing and Community Development Group at the state of California. And he was able to exert enough pressure on us that we went ahead and zoned the Hacienda property for more than any of us wanted to. We were hoping to get 20 to 25. We initially gave him, if he was creative, he probably could have had 12 to 16 units, but that wasn't enough for him. So here we are again, trying to figure out what to do with the church property. We still have a pretty unique solution. Do we need it right now? No, I don't think we really do. But a couple of factors that I wanted to throw in is, if we do remove the zoning on this, legislation is coming forward that will make it very hard for the council to do something like this again, which is to zone public property, such as a church, a school, a city hall, which would really be the most viable pieces of property. That will not be allowed under some future state statutes that are coming forward. So once this is off the table, it will probably be off the table for a very, very long time. But I am also going to go forth with the support of having staff bring forward a resolution so that the city council can remove the zoning and remove the referendum from the ballot. And I will speak to it further at that point, but I did want to give, for some of you who may not show up next week, a chance to hear some of the arguments that are going to be presented on both sides of this story. So, at this point, yes, councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, I just want to add to that. You know, here's the issue. You know, Montesereno is a very unique community. And when we get to the point that we can't zone a church or the city hall, what the hell are we going to zone? I mean, this is it. There's just not places left. I really believe that the long-term solution is us to be, you know, working with the state to try to change these laws, because we're not San Jose. We don't have lots of land. This is, you know, we're stuck. We have to comply. But how do we comply when there's no place to comply to? That it's really, this really has to change at the state level. And we know how hard that is, because we have tried so many times. I, you know, my vote next week will really depend on whether or not the Hacienda goes through or not. Because if it goes through, the church is just superfluous. It just doesn't, it doesn't help our cause any. So that's kind of where I sit right now. But that's not our long-term solution. We really do not have a good long-term solution. So.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from staff? Did we miss anything that we need to do, other than give you direction? We don't need to take a vote or anything? So I think that the council, through just the comments that I hear, are going, are asking you to bring forth language for removing the zoning of the church property and removing the referendum from the ballot.
Do you need to make a motion for that?
No.
So we will work to schedule a special meeting for next Tuesday.
That brings us to item number eight, which is designation of voting delegate and alternatives for the League of Cities Annual, League of California Cities Annual Conference. And do you have a quick staff report for us?
Very quick. Everyone, I'm sure, is very familiar with the League of California Cities. Every year, they do have their annual conference and expo, and it's their largest and most comprehensive educational event. They also, during the annual conference, the league conducts its annual business meeting, where the membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish league policy. And with a lot of the things that are going on in California and with the leagues involved in, you know, there would likely be quite a few items that the membership will be voting on. So we, you know, wanted to bring this to your attention in the event that there was, you know, someone who was interested in going, because we do need to designate a voting delegate in advance, and transmit that information to the leagues that they will have. Yes, and this is another situation where we get one vote, just like every other city in the state, which is hard to imagine.
Has anybody called us, you know, lobbying us for anything?
Not yet.
I mean, you know, you know, this is California. We've got cap and trade and everything else.
That is true.
Okay, so do we need to, would any, do we need to ask for a volunteer, or can we just make Curtis, no?
Last suggestion would be to ask for volunteer.
Okay.
This is in Hawaii, did you say?
No, it's in Southern California.
No, it's in Moscow.
I'm there.
No, it's in lovely Long Beach.
Lovely Long Beach, California.
Which is actually a pretty nice place.
And you don't have to go, even if you volunteer. We're not forcing you to go to Long Beach.
But we don't have to go?
Well, I would.
You have to go to vote, though. You can't do a mail-in vote, right?
No, no, you have to be in attendance.
Because we attended the conference last year, you and I.
I didn't go.
Yeah, you did. Wasn't it in Sacramento?
I think you went to the newly elected.
That's different, and I didn't go last year.
Oh.
So they have one of these in Southern California, and then they have one in Northern California. So a couple of years ago, it was in, it was in San Jose, actually. Usually they are in Sacramento. Somehow San Lucado got it into San Jose for that one year. And all of us went to that. But as a general rule, we have not gone to it. I think Curtis Wright went to it once, when it was down in San Diego.
No surprise, yeah.
Yeah.
What dates are those? It's in September?
It's in September.
Yes, it is.
Twelve to fourteen.
Twelve to fourteen.
I can't go to.
I don't want to go.
Yeah, but I think the general thought is, most of the topics that are being voted on generally do not apply to us, and we've always tried to be pretty fiscally responsible and go to them when they're close to us. So, am I hearing that nobody wants to go to Long Beach?
I will be out of town.
Okay. I'm going to go with the fiscal responsibility reason for not going.
Second.
Okay. So then, we're just not going to do anything?
Yeah, it's fine. I just, you know, wanted to afford everyone the opportunity, and if someone wanted to go, then you need to make a vote, and then we would put your name in.
There are going to be a lot of great topics, and I'll discuss some of them at our council member comments.
And the one in Sacramento, I think, is much more worth going to, because you also have the ethics training, as well as more things that apply to Montesereno.
It's actually different than that one, though.
Right. That's what I meant.
Yeah. Okay. All righty, then that brings us to the committee and commission reports section of our program tonight. We'll start on our right side this time. Councilmember Turner, she's shaking her head, nothing?
I evacuated and came back.
All right.
For the fires.
Nothing?
Nothing. Councilmember Ann Stan丁?
I've actually got one.
Go for it.
Shockingly. We had a special meeting for the Clean Water Commission JPA, and it was a special meeting because we put out a bid to get, to get a company to look at what needs to be done, basically, in the four cities, four West Valley cities. And we only got one bidder, but it turns out that they're like the guys that do all this stuff, and so we voted unanimously to appoint them to do a report and recommend the changes. Basically for consulting.
Right, it's related to green infrastructure.
Huh? Relating to, excuse me, thank you, relating to a green infrastructure.
Yeah, which is becoming a requirement, and they're going to help us with that. They're an awesome group. I think it's extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. So just a couple of items. At our Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Group, we hired a new executive director. Our current executive director is leaving us to go be the county communications director. So in a way, we're kind of getting two people to work for us now, because she is going to be a great advocate for us inside of the county. And we've worked very well and very closely with the county, so this is really a win-win situation. Our new executive director is Denise Sellers, who was the former police chief of Gilroy. So she was an assistant director, so she just ratcheted herself up a notch. Also, at our Silicon Valley Clean Energy Group, we continue to discuss the efforts of some of the larger utility companies in the state, trying to do whatever they can to really take any momentum away from the community choice aggregate organizations like ours. So they would love nothing more than to kind of bury us in bureaucracy and fees and try to find ways to make it so that our fees are not going to be competitive with their fees, even though, even if we are on an even level, we're still 100% carbon-free, and PG&E is not. So we're going to have to see where this plays out. There's forces at work, and we'll see. This is kind of turning into an Aaron Brockovich kind of a thing, as somebody termed it. So PG&E, interesting company to go up against. And that takes us to the council member comments. We'll start with councilmember Rogers.
Oh, none.
None. None, none, none?
I got a call from John Pang today.
Oh, yeah, me too.
I didn't answer a call from John Pang, but.
I talked to him.
Yeah, he called me, too. Yeah, he told me he called everyone.
I talked to him for a few minutes.
Feel left out?
Well, maybe he left.
He called you, he just didn't pick up.
He was just checking in on the latest advice letter, which you guys all saw.
Their increase, their new increase in water costs?
Yes, he asked me how he could assist, and I said, stop sending us increased letters.
Actually, I do have a comment.
Okay.
Related to that comment. A friend from Saratoga, Rishi Kumar, has developed an app for phones.
I saw that.
Where you can protest against San Jose Water Company water increases.
An app?
All you have to do is type in your email address, sign it electronically, and click, and the letter goes to the right place.
I did that today.
That's funny.
There's really an app.
There's an app for that.
I'll have to look for that. I have San Jose Water, so.
I think it's 85% increase, is it?
It was 0.85.
0.85?
Yeah.
For now, yeah.
Not 85. 85 would be pretty substantial.
Yeah, maybe there's a way to put that on next door.
Yeah, maybe there's a way to put that on Nextdoor, where you have a lot of people to, to download the app and send in protest letters, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure we could do that as a city.
As a city, but I can do it as a.
You could do it as a councilperson, yes.
Councilmember Rogers, any comments?
Still no.
Still no? Okay, well, then I won't make this go any longer, except to say that our youth commission is going to visit our legislators tomorrow in Sacramento, and hopefully we'll have a good trip and the temperature will not choke us out of there, because I was in gold country over the weekend, and it was pretty stifling, so. All righty, so at this point then, we will adjourn.
Hey, wait, 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 you put Santa first.
Well, everybody is like packing up, and I'm like, I gotta go, I gotta go.
You're off the door.
I'm starting to take it personally, to be honest.
We're going to put you first on the agenda next time.
I remember.
Thank you. Has anyone been by Blanchard in the last few days?
I've driven by it.
Well, you should go, it looks awesome.
Oh, great, good, Blanchard.
Yeah, they finished all the frontage improvements, and they did a fantastic job. And we're thinking by the end of next week, they will actually have the new pavement down. So it's hard to believe, but by, hopefully by the end of next, next week, early the following week, at the latest, we will have completed the project. So I, I've been out with the engineers a couple of times, and they made a few adjustments, but I think they were all for the better. So I think that the residents and the, the city council will, will think that it turned out to be an awesome job.
Okay.
The, oh, the, I, we haven't announced it yet, because I'm still working on the graphics, but I've been working with the Santa Clara County Fire Department. They have a wildfire prevention presentation that they have put together called Ready, Set, Go. We are going, and I've invited them to do one for our community. It is tentatively set for Wednesday, the 5th of September at 6 o'clock at Dave's Avenue Elementary, and I'll be sending out more info. What we do intend on producing a postcard, and we want to send one to each, every, every household, so we can make sure the entire community is invited. It's a great presentation that they do, and it helps folks with getting ready, getting set, and go if necessary, in the event of wildfires.
They had a great mail program, because one came to our house with a brochure of what to do and.
Yes, it's related to that.
It was great, it was very helpful, actually, to get something specific like that, so that's wonderful.
Yes, and, and so this is basically, they take that and turn it into a meeting, and so there's interaction, and so we're planning on it for Wednesday, the 5th of September at 6 o'clock at Dave's Avenue Elementary. The only other last thing is, is beach traffic, my favorite topic. I have, we, not just me, but I've continued to work with Los Gatos on as, as many strategies as we could possibly come up with to try to do whatever is possible, and we have had some less than fabulous feedback about the Ridgecrest closures, but I think I mentioned this in some correspondence with you, but what was really important to both Monteserino and Los Gatos was, we needed to close it a few times, leave it open, and see if it made any difference. What they determined was, not this past weekend, but the one before, when it was open again, that it, it did cause some severe backups, as well as some safety issues further up the hill and then back down into Los Gatos. So I, you know, I've had talked to a number of folks that live up there and have asked them to, you know, be patient and to try to be as understanding as possible, so we are interfacing with a number of residents and, you know, trying to get as much information out as we can about any potential closure. So hopefully, in, in over the next few weeks, we'll get just, we'll get enough information to determine, you know, what, if any, additional measures we might take. But I just wanted to give you an update, that we, we are meeting regularly, we're doing everything, I, I think, I believe that we're doing everything that we possibly can, which, of course, is not enough, because it's a real headache, and I, I completely get that.
Is, is this an item we can put on an agenda, at least for discussion, just to kind of talk about what's been done over the summer, and what has been the reaction, and any, any data that could be presented, or any thoughts of what might be done after this particular beach season is over?
Yes, I think we could, there's, actually, I think it's on tonight's agenda.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
There's a lot of information, if you just go on the town of Los Gatos website and look under the city council, there's a lot of information that would, but we.
I mean, I was thinking mostly for those residents, because I know that on Nextdoor, somebody posted from the Los Gatos council that the reason the streets were reopened and causing the gridlock was because Monteserino residents were very upset that we closed the streets.
Which, which wasn't, I mean, they were upset, but it was not the reason. We, we, we did it because we wanted to compare open versus closed, so, and I, and I did relay that to the folks up there, so I'm not sure where that came from.
No, it was posted on Nextdoor.
No, I mean, in terms of where that thought came from. So, you know, what we could definitely do beyond that is, I could also potentially have Matt Morley, he's the Parks and Public Works Director, and I'm sure he, he could come and, you know, because while I participate, it's really his organization that carries it all out, so I can certainly check with him and see if he could come and hang with us.
If he could, I mean, that's probably the number one complaint that we're hearing about these days, and it would look, I think, good for the city council to show that they're concerned and they're on top of this, and we are looking for solutions. Although, like you said, Los Gatos is doing the heavy lifting on all this, and that's probably the main part of the message.
So yes, I'll be happy to check with him and, and see if he can come and hang with us, and we can have a, give you the opportunity to speak directly to him.
That would be great.
That's a very good question. Have we had Monteserino night at Jazz in the Plaza?
We, we are not, this year, we, we are not.
They gave them the money, and they said they were going to give us some.
Oh, wait, maybe I'm mistaken. There's, there's two different groups.
Let me know, because if there is, I think a couple of show up.
I'm sorry, I may be confusing.
It was a week or two ago. I thought it was, I thought it already happened.
Okay, sorry.
I apologize. I, they changed the name, something happened, I can't, I can't keep up with it. Or there's something, but who was running it, I can't, I'm sorry. That's it.
All right, then we are adjourned until.